Mayor, did you hear me?
Was that you, Cassie?
Yes, everyone's here, just to let you know.
Is Chris here?
Yes, he is.
Okay, he's not showing up.
He's here, he's on, he's actually in the office and he's right there.
There's John, yes, all right, everyone is here then, all right. Seven o'clock, I would call to order the regular meeting of the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners for October 26, 2020, and as is our custom, we will begin meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. Jay, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge, would anyone rise for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And first thing we want to do tonight, I would ask the town clerk to swear in our police chief.
I claim Shorty Johnson.
I claim Fulton Johnson.
Do some swear that I will be alert eventually to enforce the criminal law of this state? Do some.
Do some swear that I will be alert to enforce the criminal laws of the state?
And that I will not be influenced in any matter on account?
That I will not be influenced in any matter on account.
Of personal bias or prejudice?
On personal bias or prejudice.
And that I will support and maintain the Constitution?
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States?
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina?
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And execute the duties of my office?
And execute the duties of my office.
As chief of police of the town of Pittsburgh?
As chief of police of the town of Pittsburgh.
According to the best of my skill, abilities, and judgment?
According to the best of my skill, abilities, and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Shorty.
Thank you, thank y'all. I want to just thank y'all and thank Mr. Kennedy for putting the trust in me to lead the town. I'm looking forward to it, looking to continue to working with the guys and pushing the police department forward. So I appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, all right. Before, all right, so the next item on the agenda then is to adopt the agenda with a one change, and that is to move new business ahead of miscellaneous.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
May, can you please repeat that?
I'm sorry?
Can you repeat the change, please?
The change is to move item, the new business ahead, right ahead of miscellaneous.
Okay.
Okay. Of course, we will then adopt the consent agenda when we get there. So Chris, manage your updates.
Yes, sir. Not too much tonight. Obviously, we've spoken of the rearrangement of the agenda. Just a couple items, townwide in general. We do have, with Halloween being the Saturday, I've worked with our police department to put together a few Halloween tips. It's pretty customary for the police department to put together some items for the safety of our citizens and residents as we do trick or treating and things of that nature in any given year. Certainly now with the era of COVID, some of those tips are a little more refined and a little more strategic with some of that. So we're going to have that on our police Facebook page as well as the town website. So look for those types of forums for that information if you're interested. And we will also have a couple comments about our utility billing migration. As many people know, we've been converting from one enterprise software to another enterprise software. On the utility billing side, there's been a few hiccups, as can be always expected with some of that stuff. So we appreciate the public's patience as we go through that and trying to get the online payments, which if I believe are still down as of right now, we were hoping to have that corrected today. Haven't been able to catch up in the last few hours with our finance director. So again, if you might have got any questions, I'm more than happy to reach out to myself or our staff. But we, again, we appreciate the patience, we hope to be all back to normal here in a few short days as we work on that migration to the new system. So again, we appreciate everybody's patience and if anybody's got any questions, they can direct those to myself or our staff. And that's all I have.
Any questions? All right. I don't have anything tonight other than to mention that, as I sent you an email this afternoon, I did have an interview with a reporter from Channel 17 News concerning water quality in Pittsburgh. And I spent probably 15, 20 minutes with him. And you know, as is the case, they have a certain amount of time allotted per slot. So I think we got a couple of minutes on there. But in my conversation with him, we talked about the things that we were doing, what our concerns were and what our plans were going forward. So just wanted to let you know that that did occur. And I think we can probably, if you didn't get a chance to catch it this evening, I'm sure we'll be able to get a chance on their website for that.
Thank you for doing that, Mayor Noss.
Oh, absolutely. Now, let's see, Commissioner's updates, I think I'll just start around the table like we usually do. Jay, do you have any Commissioner updates?
I do not, I did attend the Saturday forum with the water and thought that was a very informative hour that we had, very nice.
Carl?
Yeah, just echo what Jay said, I was able to attend that town hall on Saturday as well. Appreciate everybody put that together and look forward to getting more into the Water Quality Task Force report as well. For the Boys and Girls Club, we're still looking for Advisory Council members. So we've got a really good group together so far. And I'd say specifically, we're looking for someone with a financial background to serve as the treasurer for that group. We're working with Hobbs Architects to evaluate a couple of different locations, potential locations for the Boys and Girls Club. And we are officially fundraising now and able to accept donations on the Central Carolina website. So good, good progress there. Chatham County Arts Council, they are finishing the Mask for Many program. That was over 1,500 masks were made by artists and sold. And then they're going to donate the rest of them that they have remaining. They also have a program called CARE, C-A-A-R-E, and they've got $8,500 left in emergency grants for artists or arts workers. So even part-time arts workers or artists are able to apply for that grant program. And they have that $8,500 that needs to be spent before the end of the year. So encouraging anybody in those industries to give to Chatham County Arts Council. That's all I had, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Fioco?
Well, not much to report, I was able to sneak away for a little vacation without COVID interfering with that effort. So had a great week last week. The news I can report is that Parks and Rec Advisory Board did appoint a new chair, and it is Ryan Ford. He's a local real estate agent, so he will be serving in that capacity.
Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tim Baldwin?
No, I don't have anything, thank you very much.
John?
No, sir.
Okay. Cassie, do we have any citizen matters, anyone?
No, sir.
All right. That then would take us to approval of the consent agenda. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda or to change it in some way?
Randolph Fuller is texting that he would like to address the board.
Okay, so that would be citizen matters then?
I suppose so, if you're willing to entertain it.
Yes, I think we should.
Do we want to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, yeah, let's go ahead and do that, yeah.
All right, motion to approve consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. The consent agenda is adopted. So the citizen comments, Mr. Bowler, I understand you wish to address the board?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'll make this brief, appreciate you recognizing me. Instead of sending an email, I just wanted to address the board and offer this to Chris and Jeff. In perusing the town, at least three of the four major political signs that we have up actually don't conform with our regulations. So the Biden signs are four by eight, the Trump Pence signs are four by eight. I think the slate signs for the GOP are slightly bigger than three by four. I know the slate signs for Dasher Howard Flores are three by four. So I would just advise, if we're not going to ever enforce this, maybe this is just time to do what the free market is suggesting and change our code to allow up to four by eight. So we don't have the situation where people call us at the paper other places and say, this sign is too big or whatever. And I say, we don't have any enforcement, I mean, I'm not the mayor anymore. And you know, maybe the town may not want to get involved with this. But if you look at our regulations, it does say three by fours. And so I'm just suggesting maybe we could visit amending that, so this is no longer an issue and let the political signs be four by eight in the town as they are in the county. Thank you very much for your time, that's all I have to say on the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Bowler, appreciate it. All right. Well, the next item on the agenda then is the public hearing concerning the rezoning of RZ 2020-04. So I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Miss? All right, Teresa, is this your?
This is.
All right.
And it says host this state disabled participants screen sharing.
Yeah, I'm good.
I'm be now, okay.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Here we go.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, good evening. First, I'd like to say that we've updated our maps, as you can see, the layout's a little different. So if you have any questions with the new layout or comments, just let us know. And John and Denise Matera Tondo are proposing to rezone parcel 6216 located at 2539 US 64 Business West from RA2 Residential Agricultural 2 Acres to RA Residential Agricultural zoning district. The parcel is approximately 3.61 acres. There is currently a single-family dwelling unit located on the property. Adjacent properties are undeveloped, though there are single-family dwelling units located nearby. The subject property is located, bordered on three sides by a larger 46-acre parcel, which is highlighted on the map. The applicant owns both properties. The larger parcel was rezoned to RA last year on June 10, 2019, as illustrated by the lighter green color. The applicant meant to rezone both properties at the same time, but the smaller parcel was accidentally left off the rezoning application, which is why it's being rezoned now. The future land use map designates this property for low-density residential neighborhood. This category includes residential developments at a low enough density to support onsite septic systems. The proposed rezoning from RA2 to RA is consistent with the future land use map's designation as low-density residential neighborhood. The rezoning is also consistent with the existing residential usage located near the property. Staff recommends that following the public hearing, the rezoning request be sent to the planning board for recommendations. Thank you, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Can I take it the applicants are online?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for Teresa or the applicants?
I have just one, and it may not pertain to this exactly. Teresa, you said that this property was up last year and it got left out, is that correct? Did I misunderstood that?
Yes, sir, the applicant rezoned the larger property that surrounds the three-acre piece. And that was rezoned last year. And the applicant actually thought both pieces got rezoned, but looking back, it was only requested for the larger one to be rezoned.
Okay, so all this property will be rezoned the same then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other, any other questions or comments?
Teresa, what was the date of last year's rezoning? You mentioned June?
June 10.
Okay. Gotcha.
Anything else?
Motion to send the item forward to the planning board.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous? So the, will be sent to the planning board, so that I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing?
I move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We're out of public hearing. And so we are now going to go to new business that we moved in front of miscellaneous. So if we could go to that. And the first item of new business is the subdivision plat, Chatham Park Section 7.1 Residential. Is that planning presenting this or?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Teresa Thompson again. Chatham Park Investors LLC is proposing to subdivide 63.6 acres into 154 residential lots. The property is located north of Highway 64 bypass, as shown by the blue outline on the map. The property is currently located in the town of ETJ. And.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that better? No.
You're still kind of down that one.
Is there still an echo?
Yes.
I even echo when other people talk as well. Is it just me?
Nope.
Randy, can you?
Not sure.
Um. Well, the applicant will be requesting the property to be annexed. I'm sorry, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. The area is owned Plan Development District, and the property is currently undeveloped. It is located east of the intersection of Grant, Drive, and Freedom Parkway and north of Subtles Road. The proposed subdivision will be age restricted, including 110 single-family as well as 44 two-family duplex residential lots. The subdivision will utilize public roads with access points off of Grant Drive. The minimum lot size is 4,200 square feet and the average lot size is 6,176 square feet. The applicant has submitted the preliminary plat titled Chatham Park Section 7.1 Phase 1 for review, which has been included in your board packets. The subdivision will include sidewalks and street trees on both sides of the streets, and the streets will be constructed with curb and gutter. There will be a type A perimeter buffer along the northern property lines. 10.86% of tree coverage area is proposed, which is approximately 6.81 acres. There will also be a 10-foot wide paved greenway trail. These plans have been reviewed in accordance with the town's applicable standards, including public utilities, public safety, home model, and planning. The planning plat was reviewed by the planning board on October 5. Discussion included that the reduced 60 gallons per day per bedroom was adequate. Off-street parking, including two-car garages and additional two cars in the driveway. And that stop bars will be painted where there are stop signs. The planning board recommended approval of the plat in a vote of six to zero. Staff recommends making a motion to consider the resolution approving the preliminary plat for Section 7.1 Phase 1. The resolution includes language stating that the final plat will not be approved or reported until wastewater treatment capacity is available. Thank you, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Teresa, just for clarification for the board, the conditions proposed by the planning board, those are embedded in this request, correct?
I'm sorry, those are just discussion items.
Okay. I want to make sure the board understood that those were either already accepted into the plan or those are things that the board also needed to kind of reiterate as they consider this item.
Yeah, they were just questions asked by different board members. And so I just went over the answers that were discussed at the meeting, that there would be two-car garages and two cars in each driveway, because they asked about off-street parking, if that would be an issue. And the reduced 60 gallons per day versus the 120 gallons, would that be adequate? And then the stop bars, they asked about if stop bars would be painted where there are stop signs. And the applicant responded that yes, there would be.
Right, so just for the board's sake, I just want to clarify that those items have already been agreed to and they're included in this application? Or does our Board of Commissioners need to make those same conditions in order for them to carry forward?
That it's already included in the application.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Design of the subdivision that Grant Drive also has five-foot bike lanes, I think on both sides, so that's great. And see that the developer is putting in a bridge to span the stream as opposed to installing a culvert. So that's a big expense and a very friendly measure for the stream.
Teresa, the area that's indicated as a future amenity area, do we know what that means?
No, sir, we do know that the mail kiosk will be located there, but we're not exactly sure what other amenities will be there yet. But the applicant may be able to speak to that.
Is the applicant on?
This is Alicia Albinia, I'm with Withers Rabinow, we're the engineering firm that is representing the applicant tonight. Mike Sissiani is with us also representing the applicant. And I think he was going to speak to the amenity area should questions arise. Mike, are you on? Mike may be having some technical difficulty, so I will, I would just add that, you know, at this point in time, we would anticipate a site plan for the amenity center to come in first of the year. And it would be a separate from this application. There's definitely a plan for the amenity center, pickleball courts, clubhouse, pool areas, of course, parking and the kiosk for this 154 units that you're seeing here, tennis courts as well.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Baldwin?
Okay, you said it's age restricted, what's the age?
It is my understanding that they are looking at 55 and older for this product and for the subdivision plan.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I will make a motion to approve the preliminary plat.
Is there a second?
And I would make sure that everybody understands the approval that I'm making a motion on is the resolution of approval sent to us from Paul Messick via email this afternoon that was not included in our paper packets, and I didn't check online to see if it was there.
Yes.
It is.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, yes. Thank you. The next item then is the memo of understanding between the town of Pittsburgh, Chatham County, and Chatham County Schools. Chris, I think you're up on this.
Yes, sir. And Cassie, if you could just bring the general packet up, that'll have that in there, that would be helpful. So this is the MOU that we talked about back at the beginning of August. We were, as we were discussing, the sewer allocations that were ultimately granted to the county, partly to the relocation of some facilities on Renaissance Drive for county operations, one of which being central services offices for Chatham County Schools. And so at the desire of the board, I drafted the MOU to partner with the county as well as county schools. And as I said in the memo, as well as the, as you'll track through the MOU, that the schools will sign off initially, just simply because they're the current user. But understanding their relationship with the county, this ultimately becomes a relationship between Chatham County and the town of Pittsburgh. And so we were working to put something together that has got, I'll say, some teeth in it, but not too much teeth. So an MOU is just an understanding between two parties and to make sure that we have some initial understanding between the two parties of what we anticipate for this former Pittsburgh High School site and soon to be former Chatham County Central Services Offices site. So again, for those unfamiliar, this is 369 West Street, 8.8 acre tract. And again, it'll be vacated in a couple of years once the Chatham County Schools moves to Renaissance Drive with that project. So what we hope to do is get out ahead of this one and start thinking about what the disposition and reuse of that property will entail. As you can see in the MOU, it just talks about, obviously. As you can see in the MOU, it just talks about, obviously, with two entities whose ultimate purpose is the public purpose, what we try to do is lay out a document that talks about whatever benefit to the community that would be. You know, be it business incubation, be it, you know, childhood services, be it any number of things. I hope the MOU is generic enough to not prohibit anything, but defined enough to also say, you know, both parties are going to have the interest in not just selling the property. Currently, it's a county asset, not just disposing of the property and saying, okay, great, we did, we just got rid of it and made the money. And we also would like to dispose of the property in a manner that's also promotes the general benefit of the community with whatever the repurpose is. So again, I've had a cursory blessing from this from Dan LaMontaigne, the county manager. I forwarded to him after I drafted it. Mr. Messick has reviewed it on our end, the county attorney's reviewed it on their end. And really what's before you tonight is to see if this hits the mark. I welcome any of the board's input on this. If we need to amend it in any way, that is perfectly okay. The deadline that was somewhat self-imposed on this was December thirty-first, so I'm hoping to be a couple of months earlier on that. And that way, if there are changes, we can discuss those tonight. I can go back, make any adjustments as needed. Obviously, if there are adjustments, I need to vet that through the county as well to make sure they're okay with it. So it's not a unilateral shift on our end. But Dan's been great to work with so far and expect that that in short order, we'll have, whether this is amended or adopted as is, we'll have an agreement in place that we all can feel confident forward in the future as this property turns over into really the unknown and that we'll work together as partners with the county and the town to make sure that there's a proper repurpose and reuse of really an integral piece of, you know, eight-point acres or eight-point-eight acres so close to our downtown is really going to be an interesting piece to look at and to invest in long-term. So it'd be interesting to see what we can do with that. Again, happy to entertain any questions and hopefully this hits the mark. Mr. Fioco, you're frozen up to me. I'm not sure everyone else can hear you.
Shoot.
You're good now.
I gotten any better?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I sent an email to the board and you, Chris, this afternoon with my thoughts on it. So I don't know if you've seen that. And the gist of it was, I think when the county did the presentation to us regarding the sewer, they thought that it would be of interest to the town for the property actually to be vacated by the school admin folks because they stated that the property would be a better tax revenue asset if it were privately owned, both ad valorem and I think sales tax was mentioned. And so I believe the discussion was something about a mixed-use development. And so when I saw the description of what the focus might be on this, I wanted to change that. And I included that language in an edited PDF version. And it is the one, two, three, four, the fifth, whereas, I changed it to read, whereas Town, County, and Schools wish to repurpose the property to higher and better uses of a mixed-use development of commercial and residential uses. Components will include but not exclusively affordable housing and/or open spaces, recreational spaces, entertainment spaces for the betterment of the community. I think that does a better job of targeting the asset that I agree is the revenue associated with employees coming on a daily basis into downtown, so close to downtown, that it'd be converted to another type of asset for the town. So I would like to see that modification made. And I wanted to add other entities to the partnerships. And one was the development community. I know that the University of North Carolina Government Development Finance Initiative is going to do a really great job, but I think it'd be great if we had some components of the development community involved as well. And I think this property in the boundary of Main Street. I need to double-check that, but I think Main Street is also an interested partner. Commissioner Fioco, thank you for that. I did read your email. I didn't read the attachment. Didn't see that attachment, but I, what you're describing, I certainly agree with. I had hoped and envisioned that this reuse or repurposing or redevelopment would be mixed-use residential and commercial. And I'm certainly open to some of these more philanthropic or public good-related goals as well. But I think it's an opportunity for us to increase development of commerce. And I think that's really where our tax base needs to be bolstered. So thank you again, Commissioner Fioco. I agree with that. I don't think that this would fit in the current Main Street program boundaries. But I'm certainly open to expanding that. I think that it should be expanded in other places as well.
Anything else?
Mr. Kennedy, I'm curious if, if at any place in the conversation with the county, it may be too premature to discuss this, but has the sheriff's department location come up in discussion at all?
No, sorry, it is not.
Okay.
But nor have I asked, so I can certainly inquire if you would like.
Yeah, maybe it's just a rumor, but I thought that I had heard that there was a firm plan to move the sheriff's department out to that Renaissance Drive location.
Okay. I will certainly talk to Mr. LaMontaigne and ask.
And perhaps, perhaps similar language could just be applied or we could extend this, this MOU to an extension of that conversation. I don't know.
Yeah, certainly, this MOU, whether, if that conversation is premature in terms of their ultimate planning, I think they're pretty well resolved to the fact that they're going to move the school central services offices. But if nothing else, again, I think one of the good things about this is that I hope that not only for this project, but for others, it becomes a template-like document that will, you know, we know we can borrow from time and time again as we work and partner with the county or other organizations. And so I think that's a very good point. And whether we tether them together or do them separately, I think this document will be a good template for that.
Very good.
I, I have just a comment in reference to Renaissance Drive in the county. I would like to see, Mr. Kennedy, if you would just talk with them about what else they may plan to move out to Renaissance Drive. Because I've been out there and there's a lot of land there, and there are several things that are actually county-owned that are now out there. And it really, are they trying to just move all things from the town and place them over on Renaissance Drive? I would be interested to know what their plans are.
Yeah, and I would say I think there's a large assumption that they want to move the majority of their services out that way. The amount of land that they would have there allows them to kind of build within their own compound or complex. I know there's a desire on their end, despite Pittsburgh being the county seat, to be more approximately located to Sour City. And moving west does assist with that effort to, because they do have some offices in Sour City as well for certain services. So it positions them, again, four or five miles closer. You know, we're sixteen miles or so apart, so it's not all the way. But I can certainly talk to Mr. LaMontaigne about that. And I know they've done some master planning efforts and some long-range planning efforts in terms of their services. Some of those conversations have been had, really kind of ad hoc with our conversations about the town hall and the services that will go into there. But I can certainly, I talk to Mr. LaMontaigne about weekly anyway. So when I ask about the sheriff's office, I can certainly ask about if the county's produced any type of report or something that could be open for us to inspect and converse about. Because again, just understanding their premise of the Renaissance, and I do think we will have growth in our western boundary. And so I think they will eventually become part of Pittsburgh on that side. They can annex just yet. I think we will have some growth on that side. So perhaps they're trying to be out there before everyone else moves there. I'm not sure. But I can very much have that conversation. And in my short tenure here, Mr. LaMontaigne has been open and honest with me on many items. So I expect he'll be the same with this as we continue to partner together, at least in terms of information sharing.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments, questions?
And Mayor, if I may, if, if the board is, is okay with that one adjustment that Mr. Fioco had for that fifth, whereas, I would ask that basically cursory consent to that. But in deference to wanting this to be an effort that both parties are good with, to allow me to go to Mr. LaMontaigne, share the language with him, make sure they're okay from a vetting perspective. And if the board's okay, we can just put this on one of your future consent agendas. I presume they'll be okay. But again, I don't want to adopt this without them seeing that language, so.
Understood.
What I can do is I'll amend it. I'll forward it, afford the amended version, which you essentially already have because Mr. Fioco's already gone to that effort. If nothing else, I'll share with you the one that goes with them, even if it's exactly the same as Mr. Fioco's. And then we'll just put this on one of your future consent agendas, either on the ninth or twenty-third, and we probably should be good to go with this, if that's okay with y'all.
That sounds like the right plan to me.
And Chris, just to be clear, there was more than just that fifth, whereas, where we, where I suggest adding the development community in Main Street, Pittsburgh to the list. So I'm fine with that. And I can mention that I did have a brief conversation with one of the county commissioners today who did not object to the language.
Great. And I spoke with the county manager at about six fifteen this evening just to let him know that there had been an amendment requested to revise the document just slightly. Again, I think the overall impact is still there. But I appreciate the editing because we want to make this certainly the intent is to be what y'all are seeking. So I'm more than happy to welcome those edits and revisions. And so we'll get that in front of them. I'll make sure that anything included there is out to our board and out to them as well. And then we'll have this on your consent agenda, either on the ninth or twenty-third of November.
Okay, all right. So the disposition of this item for tonight is to simply have the town manager prepare a new draft and have discussion with the county and then get back to us at a future meeting, hopefully the next one, if not that one, the one thereafter, to give him the authority to execute the memorandum of understanding. So with that, we will now go to miscellaneous, which is the report from the town manager on sewer capacity, et cetera. And I know there's been some conversation and documents back and forth on this, but Chris, I'll turn it to you.
Yes, sir. So what we were hoping for, and to give a little backstory to this, at the September twenty-eighth meeting of the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Kirk Bradley, on behalf of Northwood MHPD and Mosaic, has submitted a request for sewer allocation. And its effect was going to be basically all that we had left and really more of a prompt as much as anything else to say, okay, we, at least in Lisa's staff's perspective of, all right, we need to nail this down and make sure that we understand where our sewer capacities are. At that meeting, I committed to y'all that I would spend the next month and try to put the numbers together, provide something that would give ultimate clarity to both you as our elected board, but also staff and the developers and any other stakeholders who have an interest in our sewer capacity. I've worked over the last month, obviously in the midst of a lot of other projects, and there is no deliverable tonight, unfortunately. Despite the best of efforts and intents, I've worked with a lot of people and I'm appreciative of a lot of people's time that have talked with me about it, consulted about it, shared their expertise with me. But rather than sending something out in draft form and perhaps creating more confusion around a very much confusing topic over the last few years for us, I didn't want to taint the waters with any numbers. So anytime something comes out of our office, we hope that people rely upon it with accuracy. And so rather than sending that out, even with the full caveats and asterisks that can be applied, I just felt that it was better to have this conversation to kind of give you a little bit of a status update. We are, I think we're getting really close. I've had a lot of conversations, as I said, with folks in the know. And they have been kind enough to grant their time to kind of catch me up, both from a context and historical perspective, but also some of the current stuff. And, you know, I'm not a professional engineer, but I'm attempting to learn with this. I've certainly have experience with the water and sewer world. Sewer capacities, especially at this kind of critical mass level, are sort of a new thing to me. So again, I've worked with several folks. We are trying to map it out where, if you're familiar with what a Gantt chart is, where I want the board to have the comfort level that when sewers go on this way and capacity goes that way, that when they connect, that's what we know, we know what to allocate. Certainly, our demands increase are well in excess of our capacity right now. We have a lot of demand, which is, I think, a good thing. You know, certainly people want to invest in our community. And we're doing a lot of things right now, trying to increase our capacities. We've got the Chatham Park Water Recovery Center coming online, hopefully in March or April of twenty-one. We've got the Sanford Line that will help with some capacities. We're hoping to have that project out to bid in quarter one of calendar year twenty-one. We think that line will be in the ground within eighteen months of that, no later than probably two years of that. So again, by probably January of twenty-three, which seems like an eternity away, but it'll be here before we know it. As well as some other things that we can do, be it flow reductions, be it helping with our I and I. And so there's, I think there's good confidence. There's, I think, I feel better about seeing the numbers. And I know that that seems uninformative, I guess, for y'all because you haven't seen what I'm looking at. And I certainly acknowledge that kind of bias. But I've been encouraged by it. I think we're going to look at, make sure our bases are correct, make sure our flows are correct, and trying to correct all the numbers that if there's anything that appears to be inconsistent, we want to say, okay, well, this is the number moving forward. And so I have a great deal of confidence that we're going to have something to you in the very near future that will put all of the worry and ails with this to rest. Now, we will still have the conversations of when do we grant this, who do we grant it to, all those types of things. But what I hope is that you'll have ultimate clarity of saying, on this day, whatever day that may be, you know exactly what we have left. And you know exactly when we're going to get the next part. And just having that comfort of saying, well, hey, we know that we only have, you know, a hundred thousand gallons of sewer on this day, but we know six months from now that we'll have a million gallons of sewer or whatever those numbers may be. I think having that comfort's really going to take some of that frustration and anxiety that I know the board has, I know staff has it, that we can consult with developers and say, you know, you don't have to just stick your neck out or take an IOU when you get something approved. We really want everyone to feel like that they're equally informed, they have the advantage of information, and that anybody who wants to develop in, in the town of Pittsburgh or is interested in development in the town of Pittsburgh knows exactly what's going on. And so it's one of those things of probably a little bit of catch-up that we, as, as staff, we could have taken care of a couple of years ago. But again, we, we, we are gaining new information every single day. If I had done this three weeks ago, I would have had less clarity about our discharge permit. I would have less clarity about the Chatham Park uh, plant. So every single day that goes by, we're gaining information, which is a positive thing. I wish we had this resolved tonight. Unfortunately, we do not, and it's my, my sincerest apologies that we do not. But I'd rather give you something accurate and clear than just uh, currently what's now a, a, a jumbled up spreadsheet that heaven forbid you jump into my mind and have to decipher that thing. But I, I think, I think we're getting in the right direction and I, and I'm very confident that you'll have the clarity that you so seek in the very near future.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments for Chris on?
And I will say too, I'll, I'll probably reach out to some of y'all who were um, on the board for context. I know Commissioner Fioco, he and I have already spoke um, with some of his uh, projects from uh, from both uh, his professional side as a non-elected official, his professional side as elected official. Um, he's got, and his tenure on the board, certainly, he's got a, a long um, uh, history of context with some of these things. So I will be probably reaching out to some of you to, to, to get this. And again, my hope is to not um, ever send anything to you the day of the meeting. I'm hoping to have this to you a couple of weeks in advance. That way you can poke at it, you can prod at it. And if there's anything that seems unclear, let's get that handled in advance. And, and so that was part of the logic today too, was as important as this issue is, and it's important to a lot of people, including us on this call, that I didn't want to rush anything uh, for the sake of, of being timely. I, I prefer to be timely, but I'd rather be, I'd rather have it be clear, concise and helpful than just simply timely alone.
I really appreciate uh, those comments, Mr. Kennedy. And it is a very daunting task, as, as Mayor Nas is, is mentioned in, in an email thread and, and Commissioner Fioco as well. We've been struggling to wrap our heads around this uh, moving target for a number of years. And we've had a lot of good help, but we haven't, I feel like we haven't ever really had someone focus on it with your skills, background, expertise. And so I'm really looking forward to what it is, whatever it is that you present to us. A graph or a Gantt chart or uh, what have you. I, I'm confident that you'll be able to provide greater illumination on all of the moving parts, uh, the many opportunities in future that will be opening up, um, that will give us more breathing room, that will give us more capacity, as well as the limitations and constraints today and in the near future. It is a massive undertaking that you've, you've very uh, courageously uh, undertaken. And, and I, I really appreciate that. And I think um, in your short tenure, you've probably heard and felt some of the pressures that we as elected officials have been feeling. It's not just our friends with Chatham Park Investors and, and the ECO CP, the Mosaic Project, the Northwood uh, Development, but a number of different developments around town, and some of them are so small, they don't even have names yet. And um, they're all, they're all valuable, they're all going to contribute to the local economy. And I feel a great pressure to keep them all in consideration. So um, uh, I hope that we can um, I hope that we can make the decision on this uh, agenda item with the benefit of your written uh, formal input after you've had uh, time to put that together.
Yes, sir. And I think that's, that's the goal, is that whether you're um, you know, in Mosaic and asking for seventeen thousand gallons for a hotel, if you're a single-family home on West Salisbury, you need three hundred and sixty gallons. I'm hoping that we'll, that, and it more than hope, I'm going to provide to you a document that is going to lay that out and to, to specify at these metrics, here's where, here's where your allocation is going to stand. And then when we hit this trigger, it's going to be here, and we hit that trigger, it's going to be here. And hopefully, again, provide you really the, the template, the rulebook, the, you know, cheat sheet, whatever you want to call it, to ultimately be able to make a decision and say, again, when this and this hit together, great, we can grant it. And when those two things are apart, we know we got to wait for a while, and we'll work with our developers on that and say, okay, we're in that interim, interim period where sewer demand is in excess of capacity. How, how do we want to handle that? And these, you know, we're going to have those conversations about our allocation policy. And what are we going to do in those interim periods? Um, I don't think anybody wants to stymie the development on either side, either single-family homes or, you know, again, something as grand as Chatham Park is in a lot of respects, um, and everything in between. So we want to make sure that, that this is flexible and applicable, not just to the big, but also to the, to the very small individual homes, um, to give you all the best comfort to, to really use the information uh, in your decision-making. Because again, it's a policy decision to allocate. And so we want to, as staff, want to prepare you um, as best we possibly can to be informed and make really conscious decisions, so that whatever policy you choose, you feel like you're prepared to do so and can do so successfully.
Thank you, Chris. Anything else on that?
And, and just, and just for, for clarity's sake, what, what I'm planning right now, I'm going to be working really hard over the next couple of weeks to not, this isn't going to sit and lie for a few weeks. I'm going to be on this again tomorrow. What I anticipate is probably an update um, at your November twenty-third meeting, another, you know, give it another three or four weeks. And then see where we're at, uh, perhaps something by November ninth. But given how we're trying to get agendas out sooner than not, I expect you'll probably have something on your twenty-third meeting for us to touch back on this and for me to present it and, or at least discuss it, or plead for more time, perhaps, so hopefully not that, but.
Well, I'm looking forward to uh, the product as well. It, as you, you are describing it, I think it may well give us a chance to grasp the whole uh, scope of the problem and what the alternatives look like. And so I think that'll be good, and I'm looking forward to it.
I, I appreciate y'all's patience and your confidence in me to, to provide that.
Okay, and I'm, I'm happy to hear of your optimism.
There's no other choice.
Alright, uh, okay, well, that would takes us to uh, old business. And uh, Chris, uh, I'm not sure on these two items, whether action or already taking effect.
Go ahead, Mayor.
I said, but I'm not so sure that uh, actions ahead of this, whether this has affected these two items under our old business.
So the um, the annexation, uh, we actually had at the um, our previous meeting in September, on September twenty-eighth. And if the board recalls, um, a-again at the request of Chatham Park, who is the petitioner, or he is the petitioner, they requested the annexation uh, ride concurrent with their Plymouth Platte that we approved a few moments ago. And so, um, and it also worked out, um, given the legislative hearing procedures that we are now under with COVID, where one has to um, hold the public hearing, leave it open, allow for twenty-four hours, or hold the public hearing, close it, leave twenty-four hours for comment after the closing of a legislative public hearing, and then the board can take it up at a later date. And so again, we held that public hearing on September twenty-eighth. The hearing was open, it was closed, it was then continued to this evening to allow it to run concurrent with Plymouth Platte. We allowed that uh, to be open for twenty-four hours. Teresa will, will jump in and correct me if I am wrong, but I am, I am unaware of any comments that came in during that twenty-four hour period. Um, so uh, this item you have in front of you is uh, available for you to um, basically go ahead and vote. There's no need to hold a public hearing, it's already been held, simply just to, to make a motion to approve this. And Teresa, please jump in, and if I've forgotten any particulars of the uh, format or anything else you'd like to share.
No, sir, you've covered it.
Okay. So are there any questions or comments? The action would be a uh, motion to approve the annexation.
And to, and to adopt the ordinance.
And to adopt the ordinance, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Messick.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Alright.
Can we, who, who was the first and second on that, please? Who motioned and who seconded? Mr. Barnes for the motion, second, Mr. Fioco? Thank you.
For presenting that for me, Chris.
Sure. Happy to usurp anytime, I guess.
And I, and I gather from our discussion that the uh, sewer allocation, item number two
Yes.
Needs to be moved?
Uh, yes, sir. So um, a- as, as we talked about a little before, obviously very much tied in with the, the sewer. Um, I spoke with Mr. Kirk Bradley um, over the last few days, and also spoke to him this evening, um, just to bring him up to speed with this. Obviously, um, any delay in my manager's report uh, has a, as a direct delay to his sewer allocation request. He was, he was quite amenable to that, he understands kind of the situation that we're in. He certainly needs answers sooner than not, and he would appreciate an answer as soon as possible. But he's been very respectful, um, very helpful uh, in a lot of ways, as we, as we endeavor to better map out our sewer capacity. So um, on his behalf, he, he, I think he's on the call as well, but um, he allowed me to basically say that he's okay with uh, pushing this off into November, to kind of, again, kind of run concurrent with my manager's report on the sewer. And once that's presented to the board, to provide y'all that comfort, uh, he feels confident that those numbers will present themselves in a manner that will be, have more comfort in granting that, uh, rather than trying to, to grant now and then seeing later saying, oh, man, I wish we hadn't granted that allocation, any for any amount. So again, I, I'm very appreciative of, of Mr. Bradley, as well as his partners and anybody involved in that project, their patience to allow us to, to kind of figure this out uh, for once and for all, uh, so that we, we don't grant allocation and wish we had not. So um, his, his request is, is basically um, going to be continued until that report comes back to you. Um, again, if we provide, if we have clarity in advance of that, um, it'll, it'll most likely be the November twenty-third meeting, uh, when this comes back. But if for whatever reason, we hit some real breakthroughs this week, as we, as we continue on sewer capacity, you could have something in front of you as early as November ninth at that Board of Commissioners meeting. But I would anticipate for any of those listening in, um, that it'll be November twenty-third.
Okay, so that we'll be uh, pushing this then, this uh, item to uh, uh, November, one of the meetings in, in November.
Yes, sir.
Alright. Okay, well, I think then that are any commissioner concerns?
Do we need that uh, as a formal motion, given that it is uh, an item on the agenda with recommended action?
Yes, you may be right, John, that we uh, motion would be to uh, postpone action on the uh, item until one of the November meetings.
I, I would just say for um, ease of, of that motion, that we just make a motion to put it on November ninth. Um, again, I don't think we're going to render a decision that night, if I was a betting man. But it, it, for no more harm than what it is to say, we don't have the information we need to render on November ninth, let's continue this to November twenty-third. We can simply do that. Um, right, rather than saying automatically go to the twenty-third, because then if we have to bring it to the ninth, there'll be some confusion about like, well, you said you weren't going to deal with this tonight. So I would, I would recommend we say November ninth, with the ability to always, that we can push it to the twenty-third. And the full caveat for anyone listening, that it'll probably be the twenty-third.
Okay, so we'll, so the motion would be to uh, move this item to the uh, November nine, uh, two thousand and twenty agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Concerns, Jay?
No, sir, not at this time. Thank you very much.
Kyle?
No, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Fioco?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Baldwin?
No, I don't have any concerns, but we did not do the resolution for Mayor John Grimes.
Oh, that's correct, we did not. I am sorry, I missed that altogether. Uh, because we were all set to have that prepared and voted on tonight.
Draft was circulated via email.
Yes, it was.
Would it be appropriate for a motion to be made now, based on that draft? May I ask, first, let me ask, do, do all commissioners feel comfortable with that draft?
I feel comfortable with that.
Yes, I thought it was good.
I thought it was good.
I think in a motion, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Baldwin. I, I think a motion to approve the resolution concerning uh, Mayor Grimes is perfectly in order.
Cassie, would you mind putting that on the screen, just for the, for the public's sake? So um, obviously with Mr. Grimes' passing, it kind of came out after our agenda went out, so it was a late addition. But uh, I, I think we're all um, we're, we're certainly happy to include it on our agenda. We're not happy about the, obviously the, the circumstances uh, we feel for uh, the, the town of Sauer City, as well as, as his family and friends, so um, but if Cassie, you can have that put up, thank you so much.
You able to see it?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
I'm not seeing it.
Who's not?
Me.
Oh.
Huh.
It's the same version that was emailed to the board.
Yeah, I, I'm, I was.
Commissioner Fioco, your voice is lagging also, so there must be some latency there on the internet connection on your side.
Yeah, okay, I see it now.
Okay, so Mayor, are you going to read that into the minutes and then we do the resolution?
I think that is correct. So the resolution of sympathy would read, whereas the town of Pittsburgh and our community at large is deeply saddened by the passing of Sileri City Mayor, Mr. John Grimes, on Tuesday, October twenty, two thousand and twenty. And whereas John Franklin Grimes III was born on March fifteenth, nineteen forty-three, and grew up in Davie County. And whereas Mr. Grimes was a graduate of Wake Forest University, later serving his country in the United States Army in Germany as part of the thirty-eighth cavalry of the Eighth Infantry Division. And whereas Mr. Grimes came to Chatham County, came to Chatham County and Siler City in particular, and had a successful career at Cecil Bud Tire Company for forty-nine years. And whereas Mr. Grimes served with distinction as mayor of the town of Siler City since two thousand and thirteen, preceded by four terms as commissioner on the town of Siler City Towny, Town Board, and one term as Chatham County Commissioner. And whereas Mr. Grimes was a volunteer fireman and member of the First Baptist Church, where he served in numerous capacities, including teaching Sunday School to youth and adult men. And I don't know why this is scrolling down. But it isn't, uh, here we go. And whereas Mr. Grimes rendered invaluable service working for the betterment of his town and his community, Mr. Grimes was awarded the Order of the Longleaf Pine, North Carolina's highest civilian honor. And whereas his passing will be sorely felt by his family members and his many friends and the community, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and Board of Commissioners of the town of Pittsburgh, that we hereby express our sincere sympathy to his family, including his widow, Cecilia Bud Grimes, two sons, John Thomas and wife Alyssa, and Stefan and wife
Marcia.
Marcia, his sister Kathy Ganzelli, and brother-in-law Jim, and his grandchildren, nieces and nephews. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the permanent records of the town of Pittsburgh, and a copy of this resolution be presented to his family as a token of our sympathy this twenty-sixth day of October. as a token of our sympathy this 26th day of October, 2020. So do we have a motion to approve the resolution as read? Is there a second?
Second.
Favor?
Hi.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, staff, for preparing that so quickly. In terms of commissioner concern, well, excuse me, Mr. Baldwin, do you have additional?
No, I was finished. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pamela, thank you for bringing that up. Yes. Glad we didn't leave this meeting without having that accomplished.
I just wanted to lift up the lift up to the board and the mayor and the public. The recent report offered by the Pittsburgh Water Quality Task Force. It's a, a dense packet. But much of that is annexes or additions that are, are not crucial to the understanding of, of this task force's work. And I just really want to encourage us all to dive into that and, and get a good feeling for it. And I appreciate also that Commissioner Farrell and Commissioner, Commissioner Ship mentioned that they had sat in on the Saturday Town Hall. I was unable to do so for family reasons, but I would share with the board and the public, the fact that that Town Hall meeting with Dr. Heather Stapleton from Duke University has been recorded. And but when I looked earlier today, it was available on Facebook as a recorded live, Facebook Live session. So you could watch the, the video and, and the audio there. If you'd like to catch up on what happened Saturday. That's under Duke University's Facebook presence called, I think it's Superfund in North Carolina. I'm sorry, I don't have the link, but thank you.
And, and I would say too, Commissioner Bonds, that I also sat in on that. And one of the things I thought, I thought was really, really unique and I think ultimately helpful is that even though they had to cut us short, I mean, obviously there's a lot of interest in this. So certainly they filled that hour up very much. And there's some, some good conversation went back and forth. Then not only was it recorded and posted, but if you, if you listen to the recording and watch it, if you have questions, they have offered to entertain questions that, that anyone may have. So I think that's, that's even, it's a tremendous thing to offer on their part to not only catch yourself up from a context perspective, but to be able to continue the conversation and continue the interaction and ask questions of those very qualified experts. Anybody who watched that knows that those people know what they're doing and we are in good hands with their expertise. So proximate to us here in Pittsburgh. So I thought that was a, that was a very good touch on their part to offer, offer the viewing, but also to entertain questions after the, after the Town Hall session.
Thank you.
Anything else? I want to thank you all. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? It was unanimous. Thank you all. And you have a wonderful, wonderful rest of the evening and, and week.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Jordy, Chief, congratulations again. And Cassie and Chris, thank you very much. And planning staff, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank y'all. Have a good evening.